So we're starting with the work session, which is not televised. To the work session of the planning board of January tenth, twenty twenty four. I'm Deirdre. He's getting some feedback. I'm Deirdre Conley, the chair. We're starting with a work session. Mostly pertaining to the MBTA zoning. Luckily, we have our own IT. So first, we have a timeline that I believe Evan put together of kind of backing out from town meeting to last month, laying out kind of a rough, or not so rough, proposal of where, what we, where we need to be on our presentation on a couple, every couple week basis. So tonight, we're just going to review the timeline and then it looks like, based on this, we are hoping to have a draft of the presentation done in two weeks. I'm not myself altogether sure that that's a realistic timeline. The proposed zoning, we have a draft of that already went into the state. So in terms of forwarding the proposed zoning to town council, I guess we could do that at any time, like now. I don't know that we have to wait till the first. And then at our next meeting, we're going to finalize. So that's in four weeks, we're going to hopefully have a final draft of our presentation. What do people think about having a first draft of a presentation in two weeks? And I guess, what do people think about how we're going to generate the draft?
So are we generating it, or is it NIMCOG that's starting the process?
I think we're going to do it as a collaboration.
I didn't know. That's, I'm asking the question. I thought they were.
As I understand it, the board intends to present maybe several slides that have more technical information than maybe NIMCOG presents. But my understanding was that majority of the presentation would be done by the planning board, understanding what town meeting is really going to be looking for. And NIMCOG would be there for any, any real technical, yeah, any real technical questions.
I think it's in our best interest in terms of generating support or continuing to generate support that at least some amongst us present. What do other people think?
I think we should do it, like if you're going to present it, I think you should control it, right? Like, I think you can grab slides from NIMCOG and put them in, what have you, but.
I think they do a great job presenting, myself.
Yeah.
Every, every interaction we've had with them, with the members of the different neighborhoods, I thought they did a great job. Like a shorter version, maybe, is what I would go with.
A shorter version from them?
Yeah.
I agree, I think they did, they do a great job.
Or, or we just keep them for answers, but.
Yeah. You only have ten minutes.
Yeah.
To present.
But I think it's important for us to communicate. I think the things that we need to communicate to the town that NIMCOG will not be able to communicate as well to the town. And that is, I think, first of all, I think we need to make a very clear, I think, I think we need to keep insistently saying that we've chosen things so that the likelihood of them actually being developed is very small. I think that, that keeps getting overlooked because we keep looking at, well, what happens if this happens? You know, what happens if that happens? But we want to keep saying, yeah, but the likelihood of that is going to be very small. And I think NIMCOG isn't going to give that message as effectively as we would.
Right.
We should focus on that.
I think for us to own it and say, we've very carefully chosen these locations with an eye towards minimizing.
Right. Because it runs a little bit counter to what, I mean, NIMCOG is very much in support of, of, you know, the idea of providing this kind of housing, so on and so on. We are too, but not necessarily through this means. And I think if the town understood that we're doing this in order to fulfill the requirement, but at the same time, we're doing it in a way that it is likely not to ever happen, then that they would be able to make better decisions about, about it than not, so.
So do we have to open it up? Should we open it up with what the mandate is and then how we're responding to it? Or are we just coming out with how we're responding to it?
No, no, I think.
Assuming everyone knows.
No, I think most people don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
So like, what is, maybe the first slide, what is the MBTA community zoning mandate?
Right.
Yeah.
What are we being told to do?
Right.
And then we, I think we need to deal with the question of, I mean, there are a lot of people who firmly believe that we don't have to do anything, we can just ignore it. And we have to, we have to defuse that argument, we have to defuse that fairly quickly.
I think most people understand.
Yeah, but some don't, and some of the ones that don't are quite vocal.
They can be vocal, but they're not going to sway a vote.
I agree, I don't think.
I hope you're right.
I think Chelmsford's smarter than that. I think every town meeting.
Well, a lot of it is. I, I think we will prevail, but, but I don't, I don't want us to go down a rat hole of, of trying to defend against arguments that are really a little far fetched.
Spurious.
Yeah.
This is a bit of us being in rabbit holes is a bit of a sidebar, but Paul and/or Evan, do you, either of you have concerns about us stipulating? I mean, I, I think it's the truth that we're trying to minimize the impact on the town. Though one of the consequences of that is that we're not likely to generate much, if any, housing, other than the camp, the West Campus that's already approved. Do you think we put ourselves in peril in the eyes of the state to be presenting the argument in that way? I mean, so I had a conversation about this with Evan last month, or I don't know when, that I think if we were challenged, that we did, that we have tried to minimize the impact, that we have a very reasonable response, which is, first of all, we have just generated four hundred, three hundred ninety-six units, and in the last ten years, we've generated however many hundreds of units of multifamily housing to such an extent that our infrastructure is severely stressed. And so that unlike other towns that have had very much a NIMBY position from A to Z from the beginning of time, we have not. And so I, I think we have, we could respond, if such a criticism was rendered against us, that there's reasons for the way we proceeded that are particular to Chelmsford. Do you think?
So I agree with that. I mean, the state has been very clear that this mandate is a mandate for zoning, it's not a mandate for housing production. And if you pass the zoning bylaw in a manner that is consistent with the statute and the regulations, then I don't see you're going to have any issues with the state.
Okay. Perfect.
I was just looking at, I keep pointing to Lexington, but I think they really did a good job. We may want to piggyback on some of their presentations that they have, just if you want to just kind of take a look at theirs.
I have not looked at them.
Yeah, I would take a look at it because there's just nice, just what you were just saying, like kind of tell you what, what it is, what they're, I mean, obviously, our approach is a little bit different, but, and what we've chosen is different, but they did a good job.
I think it's part of your outline, so we, the first slide is, you know, what is MBTA zoning? Second slide is, you know, why is it needed? That speaks to the, to mandate. Then I think you need a slide about your process, what was your public engagement, all the meetings, the district meetings. Need another slide about what, what was your strategy, which we've talked about, minimize impacts, try to avoid short-term implementation, focus on intermediate long-term implementation, UMass West. Then you think you need a couple of slides on all the districts that were reviewed, so that people understand that this was a process, an iterative process. And then obviously, you need a couple of slides on the two districts that have been chosen. And then you need a couple of slides on the actual bylaw that highlight the sections of the bylaw, how it, how it's customized to serve Chelmsford, specifically the architecture.
Three-story.
Yeah. So at that point, you're pushing ten slides.
Yeah, and, and you know, I'd be amazed if we could do it at two minutes a slide, you know? Which means already we're, over, over the time we're going to have a lot of.
No, you could, you could present it.
I have heard so many people say they can present slides, one a minute, and I've never seen anybody do it.
Yes, you did.
I was going to say Chris did.
When I, when I presented.
It's a caution, we have a lot of slides here. If we can trim it a little.
So I'm, I'm happy to work with a couple of members, if that's how the board wants to proceed, maybe do a subcommittee. Clearly, we could clearly have a draft, a fairly well-refined draft for your meeting on the twenty-fourth. As Mike mentioned, I mean, a lot of these slides are already created. And I think the only ones that need to be customized are the Chelmsford Planning Board strategy and the process.
I think there's that one slide that, in the NIMCOG, in the NIMCOG presentation that shows the different architecture of the buildings.
The middle.
The only thing was, I think, that big of a picture will not look good in towns and town meeting, on that far presentation.
I'm not sure you need that picture, but I think the board can articulate, articulate your, your design standards are influencing a certain outcome.
Yeah, it's just because I think that's where people are going to get scared, that we're going to be building six stories.
Right. We could also, we could take pictures of existing multifamily along 110, Google Earth shots.
That's exactly what Lexington did. Lexington was really, like, this is what we're proposing, they took pictures of.
Existing developments.
Existing developments in town, this is what this means. I'll send it out to you guys as soon as I can get my Outlook working.
Yeah. Which is exactly the strategy, I think, I think the board used.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then, then we're on to pretty much, once the presentation is drafted and then finalized, then it's, you know, presenting it at the various pre-meetings, which, you know, hopefully is an opportunity. I don't know how many people watch the pre-meetings, but at least the town manager pre-meeting, I think a lot of people attend and/or watch.
Yeah, the outline would have planning board opening their required public hearing on February twenty-eighth, and assume, continue to.
Which is the same date as the warrant, isn't it?
The warrant is two days prior to.
Twenty-sixth.
Assuming that the planning board continues to March thirteenth, which works out well because the state's ninety-day pre-adoption period ends on March sixth. So if we do get any minor revisions back from the state, we should be able to, the board should be able to incorporate those within your public hearing process. Latest, latest closing would be March twenty-seventh, which would be prior to FinCom presentations. Chair has indicated, the FinCom chair has indicated either March twenty-eighth and/or April fourth. Select Board begins their review on April eighth, which is after the elections. That may go two meetings. And then as the chair just mentioned, pre-town meeting usually or always falls on a planning board, a meeting date, so you may want to proactively cancel your regular planning board meeting if the board feels as though participating in pre-town meeting, you know, is, is important.
I think it is important. I don't know if there would be any possibility that we could go early in that and then have our meeting to follow.
I can ask the town manager, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we should, I mean, we don't know what we'll need to be accomplishing at that point. I mean, we could leave it open, and if it's, if it seems not a big ask to cancel it at that point, there's not going to be a big backlog, then that would be fine, but I'm reluctant to do it at this moment.
Evan, who, on the order of the warrants, the order of subjects for the town meeting.
It's budget this in the spring, so that takes forever.
Are we going to be eleven o'clock number, the second night?
I don't, I haven't seen a draft list. Zoning is usually, no, earlier than the, the middle, middle to the, to the end. I don't know what the pros and cons are, or the rationale for placing zoning articles, but it's certainly not going to be before budget.
Right.
Okay. If it gets too late in the evening, we can always ask for it to be moved to the second night, or for the following night. You can take stuff out of order.
Yeah, they do that sometimes. Well, I think the timeline.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
Looks good, and looks like we just generated a draft, or an outline of a draft.
I can work with Evan to take a stand of the draft.
What do you think about presenting it? Being versed as you are with, I mean, I don't think it should be just one person, but, and at least more of, more of us need to be at the podium, and anyone else who's not at the podium, I think, needs to be sitting in the front.
Given that this is an election year, my recommendation would be to have someone presenting that's not up for reelection, just in case.
I think that's a great plan.
John.
I'm willing to help, but I.
Put the presentation together, and if we have to.
I'm not presenting, but.
Well, if you're a host presenter.
Yeah.
I think all of us should be standing up there, behind the speaker. But I will help put it together with you.
Okay.
And then go from there. We'll figure out who the best speaker is.
Subcommittee.
I'm running, so.
Hello, who's running? You're, you're on?
Paul, and myself, and Chris.
Okay. Some will, will come.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I might be willing, like, to pitch it, you know?
Yeah, I think we can have different sections of it.
Yeah, maybe split it up, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm not horrible on my feet.
We're going to hold you to your two minutes.
You know, that'll be the hard part.
I would recommend not splitting it up for a ten-minute presentation.
Yeah, I agree.
There may be one split in the middle or something like that. We'll see, we'll take a look. Anyway, I've, you know, if, if necessary, I'll spend an hour in front of the mirror with it. Try to reduce it down to ten minutes.
All right. Sorry. I lost my way. So now we have these awesome frequently asked questions that Chris has organized for us so kindly. I mean, I didn't really have much of an edit or anything, I thought they were great. Does anyone have?
I took a really wild shot at the first one, and I figured, Paul, you could probably add more than I added in there.
Did you look at them at all, Paul?
I did look at that, I actually presented to the Select Board.
I saw that.
This issue on Monday.
Right.
I don't have my notes from that, but, but what I can say is that the.
I do.
Worcester Superior Court specifically addressed the question of whether there is an opt-out provision in the statute and expressly rejected that. And then it went on to approvingly cite the, the guidance that was issued by the Attorney General's office, in which it stated, in addition to the penalties listed in the statute, additional penalties could be sought by the AG's office in litigation that could be resulting from fair housing violations or things of that nature. So the, the decision of the Worcester Superior Court is really limited to a procedural decision that the specific lettings in that case didn't have standing. It is not.
Right.
It does not stand for a broader defense against the statute.
Repudiation.
And say that it is, is not enforceable, and that there's, you know, there's an opt-out provision there, most certainly is not.
Right, I thought you stated that very succinctly at the meeting on Monday.
So I can review that video and add some additional text if, if needed.
Sure, I, I can actually forward, I know I, I think I sent you some language about that as well. I can forward you something that.
Okay. Thanks.
You can use, sure.
And then, I think, Chris, you had, you had Xs on number nine, you wanted to fill in.
Yeah. So one of the things that I thought of as I was doing this is that I keep hearing that we're going to add fourteen hundred plus units, and we're not, because there are some number of units already in each of these locations or planned to be built. So I think what would help in this question is if we had a count for each of the two zones of what the current count is, and it would show that the.
Delta.
The delta would be pretty minimal. So this zoning wouldn't be adding fourteen hundred, it would be adding some number much less than that.
Because of the properties we.
Yeah, because we've already got stuff there.
I've already done that for Littleton Road, so I'll send that out.
Okay.
I can do the same for UMass West.
Perfect.
That, that is good information to have.
That's the most blatant fact that we need to nail down, I think.
Exactly.
How good a position Chelmsford actually is.
And even if we didn't do the zoning, there would be some number of units there already, and this, the zoning would only add some, a small number.
Is that the case? I thought we had to, based off the, the population of the, of the, of the town currently.
Well, technically, they would have to.
We have to zone for fourteen additional units.
No, it's the property, so if you have units on the property, right? Like Fox Run and all that, you got to tear that stuff out or build to it, you know what I mean?
So we are zoning.
Sounds good, I just want to, I just thought.
So the total has to be.
Yeah.
Total has to be fourteen seventy-seven.
Right.
So right now, let's say there are thousand, let's say there are fourteen hundred units there already. If, if they wanted to adopt this zoning, they would tear down those units and build fourteen seventy-seven, so the.
To get seventy-seven.
Change is only seven, seventy-seven.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Littleton Road is zoned, the RM zoning's at seven units an acre. This is fifteen.
We're doubling it.
Yeah, we're double, but who's, it's just not cost-effective to do it.
Chris, the one thing that I would suggest on, on that one is that it's the current number of units that exist today or have been approved.
Yes.
Already, yeah.
That have been approved.
Already been approved.
UMass West.
I think I made that edit in a version I have at home.
And in tonight's hard copy packet, I included frequently asked questions that NIMCOG created back in April. So there may be, there may be some questions in here that we want to add.
Like?
I haven't, I haven't gone through it, it's pretty comprehensive, but they do, they do a nice job kind of explaining the who, what, where, when, and why. They talk about questions related to, you know, impacts to infrastructure in schools, as well as transportation. So maybe it makes sense, Chris, do you want to kind of go through it and see what, which one jumped out at you?
I did the same thing with the Mass Housing Partnership FAQs, I just added them, but I haven't really gone through to see which ones we could add in addition to the ones. There's some overlap, I just haven't gone through them yet.
And anybody, anybody who reviews it on their own time, if, if you see one that jumps out at you, you think is worthwhile adding, just, you know, shoot an email out.
Yep.
Can we just lift their presentations and answers?
Yeah, I have this as a Word document as well, I could send that out. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm just asking if that's like, an okay thing to do.
Copy and paste?
Lay your eyes.
We'll do a footnote.
If you cite them.
Yeah, no, we, we have permission.
Yeah.
And then the other item I included in your packet this evening, related to MBTA zoning, was the citizen petition that was submitted and certified. The one I had sent out to you only included the actual language, not the petition itself. And it's my understanding, the Select Board has not taken this up yet, correct?
The Select Board voted, I thought.
For the petition. They took the last meeting, they took up the ballot question.
Correct.
Okay. But it's, it's been explained to me by the town manager that town council has had a conversation with the town moderator as to how to handle this, and do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, certainly. So I had a discussion with the, the person that proposed this warrant article, tried to ascertain exactly what the purpose was, because essentially, it's just requesting the town meeting reps to oppose the, the planning board's warrant article. And what I was informed was that the intent is to be able to, to make their own presentation, to have that same ten-minute period present a PowerPoint presentation. So what I, what I suggested to the town moderator was that we combine the two for presentation. So you would give your presentation first, the citizen petition presentation would happen afterwards, and then the planning board article would be the one that gets voted on. Whichever way the vote goes will ultimately render the citizen petition warrant article moot.
So how would the questions and answers be after the presentation?
It would be directed to either presenter. We have done that before, sort of with dueling articles at town meeting.
Okay.
I think that's just the cleanest way to address this, bending any town meeting rules. It allows both parties to make their presentation.
So what happens if there's a town meeting rep who wants to? No, they couldn't then go to question, like, they couldn't, they would have to, like, someone couldn't, we would have to do both presentations, then go to, open it up to questions, so they couldn't.
So what was the purpose of the Select Board's vote?
The Select Board vote was on the request for a non-binding article on the next town election.
Oh, right, right, okay. So do we have to act on this or this is just for our information?
I think it's just for that.
Just for information. Just, yeah, just informational.
And it's ultimately the decision of the moderator, how he chooses to handle this?
Correct. But again, you know, there's very little leeway in instructing somebody that's putting forth a citizen petition in terms of telling them you can or cannot. They have the right.
Of course.
To go forward with their petition. We can't dictate the language.
Of course.
Of their petition. So what we're doing is trying to get it so that it is, you know, handled in a manner that is consistent with, you know, established precedent in front of town meeting.
Yeah.
Give everybody the opportunity to be heard.
So would this be a separate article that would be voted on?
Correct. Well, ultimately, I would presume it would be withdrawn after the planning board article is voted on. Either the planning board article is going to be approved, in which case this article becomes moot or it's going to be rejected, in which case this article is still moot. So ultimately, once the planning board article has been voted on, there's no need for the citizen petition article. Because the citizen petition article is really just addressing the planning board article.
So the citizen petition would be voted on after the planning board article?
Correct.
But it won't require a vote?
But it shouldn't require a vote. It should just be withdrawn.
Okay.
I've only seen citizens petition be at the end of town meeting ever. But I guess I've never seen a situation of dueling articles.
Right.
And the voting threshold on the MBTA zoning is simple majority, correct?
Correct.
And that's determined by the state?
That's the statute.
The statute, okay. All right. Well, we're a little early.
One suggestion, just on the FAQs list. When that, when that, when the board finalizes that, I would suggest making that available as a handout to town meeting reps on the, at the pre-town meeting. That's part of the plan, but and at the actual, and at the spring town meeting, just so they have that.
Both, yeah.
I would also put this, if we can get this finalized, put it on our website, like.
On the website, absolutely.
Because I, and once we get it finalized, you know how I send out my pre-town election packet to all my people?
We can even mail, we can even email it out to all the town meeting reps.
Yeah, as part of the, as part of the planning board town meeting, town meeting rep notification, include, include a link or an attachment.
And Chris, I can give you a number of additional citations and where the state instructs a municipality what they're allowed to do or not do with regard to zoning. Forty-eight, Section 3, forty-eight, Section 4, forty-eight, Section 6, forty-eight, Section 9, forty-eight, Section 10, forty-eight, Section 11. I mean, it's, you know, a, a, a large number of ways in which a municipality is restricted and what they can do with regard to zoning.
And then on FAQ number two, I tried to explain what I think I was trying to explain and then gave an example, but it was a really bad example. So if anyone can come up with an example within the zoning bylaws.
So also, so that's forty-eight, Section 3.
Okay.
That you're citing there. And it's not just limited to daycares, but also to educational facilities, solar facilities, religious facilities, you know, the ability of the towns, cities and towns to actually restrict those uses is limited by the statute.
Yeah.
Just like forty-eight, Section 4 requires that there be an actual usable use in every zoning district allowed as of right without the need for discretionary relief. That's an additional restriction that's put in. Forty-eight, Section 6, which deals with non-conforming uses, sets forth the minimum protections that have to be accorded to pre-existing non-conforming uses. All of these are examples of ways in which the state tells municipalities, these are the limits we're allowing you to place on zoning. So it's very well established.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so if you could send those to me, I can have those in.
You did a great job though, Chris. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else hearing questions out in the community? That may be in addition to what Chris has identified? Well, I'll introduce one because I forget where we heard this. It was some time ago. There were members or residents living up in Meadow, not Windermere, but Meadowbrook. Is it Meadowbrook? And there's been a notion floated that this could serve as a mechanism where the state could take land that's zoned as MBTA land and then create new programs or partner with developers to effectuate the development.
Like seize it?
The, the term was take it, to, to, to take land.
Eminent domain.
Yeah. I'm not sure there's any state program that actually does that.
Is there any cases of it? Like one?
I'm not aware of any. The closest thing the state comes to kind of partnering with a developer for housing is 40B. And even then, it's not a, it's not a proactive partnership.
And they certainly don't take land for it.
Correct, correct.
Are we talking about eminent domain?
Yeah, that doesn't happen.
Like, that sounds like to me like eminent domain.
That's what it would be.
Yeah.
It would have to be done by some kind of housing authority that would manage it. It wouldn't be private development.
And in our cases, as we've discussed, these are all existing well-established condo associations. So even if there was a will or desire to do that, undoing. Yeah, and undoing a homeowners association of several hundred units is probably fairly complex and challenging.
Difficult work.
Yeah.
I would imagine, very expensive. Like, just doesn't financially, ever, would ever financially make sense.
Doesn't make any sense at all, so.
Math just doesn't work.
I don't want to waste my brainpower.
So what would even be the question that we would?
I just throw that out there. I mean, it may not, it may not, it may not warrant a.
How would we add that question to our list of FAQs?
I'll give it some thought.
Is this a vehicle for the state to take over our town?
Again, I go back to what Paul said. I think town meeting reps are smarter than this.
I agree.
Okay. Well, we're like eight minutes ahead of schedule. So that we can go ahead. So should we take a little break?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a little break. I'm being nodded at by town council.
We're coming back at 7:15?
Back at 7:15 to resume the meeting at the scheduled time.
Yes, because the agenda says 7:15 public input, anybody that is hoping to provide it.
I agree. I thought that. It's just a bummer that we sometimes relate.
Apparently, we were all MBTA talked out.
A little bit, just a little bit.
It being 7:15, we will go to our regular planning board meetings, January 10th. I'm Deidre Conley, the chair, and we are holding our meeting this evening, both live and on Zoom. And if the Zoom communication should be lost, we will not stop the meeting. It's being provided on Zoom as a courtesy. And we'll start with public input, which shall be limited to statements from the public relating to issues with the jurisdiction of the planning board, but that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in the public input session? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. Anyone on Zoom?
No one expressing interest on the public.
Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed to our administrative review of the regulatory jurisdiction for definitive subdivisions and zoning. We have a letter from town council from December 8th pertaining to whether or not we have jurisdiction to request certain studies relating to specifically the Hildreth development. You gonna walk us through that?
Certainly. So specifically what Evan asked me to review for the board was whether the board can require a 21E Phase 1 study and whether it can require a turtle nesting habitat study within portions of a site that are outside of conservation jurisdiction. And then if the board is allowed to require such studies, whether they can be utilized in making a decision. So the first thing is that I reviewed was what the planning boards, what they're, they're allowed to do under the subdivision control law. And what it, what it states is that you're allowed to have rules and regulations. They must be comprehensive, reasonably definite, and carefully drafted so that owners may know in advance what is or may be required of them and what standards and procedures will be applied to them. So there's no current requirement in your planning board rules and regulations regarding 21E Phase 1 study or turtle nesting habitat study. So you would, definitely would not be allowed to apply them to a subdivision application until you had revised your regulations to make it very clear that that's something that can be required.
But, but Paul, if, I mean, is the, going by the reasonably definite, so and obviously, you know, a lot of the applications that we have don't have the uniquenesses associated with certain sites that, that others, you know, so, so in this particular case, there are definite environmental questions and issues that wouldn't be true of most, most applications. So it would seem that if you needed to put in a, a definitive, you know, statement that we need, we should be able to ask for this, we should be able to ask for that, then wouldn't we need to compile a list of every possible, you know, thing that could happen or that we could possibly think that we might ask for? That to me seems a little bit excessive. I mean, in the sense that we do identify, I think the, I think an applicant has a reasonable expectation that we are going to be concerned about issues of environment and that we also identify an environmental information report, so we do identify that we will be asking for environmentally related information. And so it seems that the applicant would be sufficiently warned that there is potentially going to be information asked for by this board related to that. And then when you combine that with the specifics of this particular application, then what that information specifically would be is, is what arose. And so that's why I was, I was wondering, wouldn't that, I mean, otherwise, doesn't that drive us to try to think of every possible thing that we might encounter and then to have, have a long. have a long list of all of these different things that we may ask for, even if it only happens rarely?
So in order to that question, I think we need to go to the next part of the analysis, which is what the purpose of the subdivision control law is.
Nice segue.
Thank you. Well, you set it up very well for me.
I'm here for you, man.
So, Chapter 41, Section 81M states, "The subdivision control law has been enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the cities and towns in which it is put in effect by regulating the laying out and construction of ways and subdivisions, providing access to the several lots therein, but which have not become public ways, and ensuring sanitary conditions in subdivisions and in proper cases, parks and open areas." So this does not really address environmental contamination or habitat protection. I believe that those are really outside the scope of what the statutory scheme of Chapter 41, the subdivision control law, is intended to address. There is some case law on that. I provided a citation to a decision from Judge Cauchan of the Land Court back in 1989. I know it's a bit dated, but there weren't really a lot of cases addressing 21E in the subdivision control context. But he specifically found that a requirement that an applicant go through a 21E process was not valid in that that's a separate state process and that the, you know, the town can rely upon whatever rights it has under that process. If there is evidence, you know, that there is contamination, you can certainly require that you be provided copies, you can become involved in that process, and the DEP certainly welcomes municipal input in the 21E process. But it's not appropriate to do that as part of a subdivision control application.
But I understand, I would understand that from the perspective of that if, if the planning board was trying to regulate that particular activity. So if you were, if we were trying to regulate the environmental hazards, if we were trying to essentially step in and do what the MCP does, Chapter 21E does, then I could understand that. But in this case, what we're doing is we're asking for information that helps us make decisions about the things that are within our purview. And one of the things I was, and I meant to send this to you beforehand, but I didn't get a chance, I, the only, only case law I have access to is overview of the subdivision control law done in, updated in 2009 by Patrick Murray and so forth. And in that, they say, they cite a case, Loring Hills Developers Trust versus Planning Board of Salem, where essentially they, they say in this document, "A planning board may seek information as well as require the submission of an environmental impact statement." And then they go on to say, "Although Section 81Q prohibits the planning board from regulating the subjects mentioned, it does not forbid the board from seeking information about those matters." And then it goes on and says what particularly they said. And in this particular case, what we're doing is we're asking for information, not because we want to regulate that process, we're asking information because that information is relevant to our decision. For example, if there are locations on the site where there's contamination, then that's a concern of us to know where we, certain things should be situated. So for example, we wouldn't want a playground to be situated on a place where there's contamination. We wouldn't want a backyard where children could be playing or any place where people, you would have a reasonable expectation that a person would come in regular contact with that contamination, that we would then would say, you know, in the planning of the layout, well, you know, you, we just don't want you to put that thing over here, you know, or it would be better off over there.
But isn't that regulating it then?
Well, it's not regulating the contamination in the sense of removing the contamination. It's, it's regulating the location, the layout of the subdivision for the purpose of avoiding certain areas that we don't want people necessarily to be exposed to. And so I think that in that sense, it's a reasonable thing for us to ask. And I would further add that if we waited for the process to occur, you know, which is the 21E process, those things often happen well after the fact. And that would be beyond any time that we've already given our approval. So it would not be effective information for us to be making our decision. And so that's why I think it's, the purpose of the information would be for us to be able to say, okay, this subdivision looks fine because you're not in those areas, or if you are in those areas, then we want you to change where you are located so that you're not in those areas. And that's really more in my mind, regulating the layout than it is the actual, we're not saying you have to remove the contamination, we're not even saying you have to test, you know, to identify what the contamination is or whatever. That's why we were asking for a Phase 1, because the purpose of a Phase 1 is to at least identify whether there is any possibility of something that would require further evaluation. And I was pretty clear that I did not necessarily think we had the authority to go beyond that. But certainly if we had some identification of where we thought these potential areas were, then we could factor those into our decision. And so that was the, that was the sort of underlying, you know, purpose of it. And I thought that this, with this one particular decision, that they gave us a pretty good standing for asking for that.
So I guess what I would say is you sort of go down a bit of a slippery slope. If you're asking for this information and you're claiming you're not going to use it, but then you do use it in your decision-making process, you are in fact actually regulating it. One thing I will say is I have had a very similar conversation with the Board of Health. Because, so because we are back onto a septic system program rather than connection to municipal sewer system for new subdivisions, Board of Health has asked me previously whether they are allowed to require a 21E as part of their review. And in that instance, I informed the Board of Health that I believe that they can request it. It can't be part of their decision-making process in the sense that they can't approve or deny the septic systems, but they're allowed to request that information.
Right.
And certainly, once they have that, they can absolutely provide it to the planning board as part of its process. So I think you can still get there. I think the safer way to do it is through the Board of Health, which is required to review the environmental impacts.
Okay, so we could request, we could request the Board of Health to, with their advice on whether this would be a reasonable thing to request? I mean, obviously, we can, we receive input from the Board of Health, but I think there's a timeline associated with that. And so would the applicant then say, well, you're beyond that timeline, so you don't, you don't have the right to ask the Board of Health anymore for anything?
If it happens after the Board of Health has either already acted or failed to act and therefore had basically a constructive grant of their approval, then yes, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do it in that instance.
Even, even though it came up afterward?
Correct.
Okay, so, so I would go back to, I still think that we would have a reasonable case for why we should be able to ask for it, for the purpose of, not for the purpose of approving or denying based on whether there's contamination, but for the purpose of being able to make a decision about the layout and so forth, knowing where that contamination is or is not. So, I'm sorry.
So I just looked up what you just read off, Paul, about the section, the purpose of it.
Yep.
And you said, because what caught me was one of the words you said was, "The subdivision control law has been enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety." And what Joel is saying is that if we knew that there's contamination, isn't that protecting them from the safety?
But you have to continue reading where it says, "put in effect by regulating the laying out and construction of ways in subdivisions." Ultimately, the subdivision control law has to do with roadways. There is some extraneous stuff, you get into stormwater and things of that nature. But ultimately, the purpose of the subdivision control law is to regulate the laying out of ways within a municipality. And you stretch it very, very thin when you're starting to try to bring in things that are outside that scope.
But the ways also include the location of the properties attached to that way. Because if you're shifting the, if you're shifting the properties, you're shifting the way that's attached to those properties. So in order to lay out the ways correctly, you have to know where the properties are.
Can I inquire, in your letter, you, you report Judge Cauchan stated in his decision that while the presence of hazardous materials is certainly a matter to be resolved, it should not be a concern of the planning board in subdivision approval. So in what way is that meant to be resolved?
It's meant to be resolved through the state mass contingency plan in the 21E process. That's what that decision held.
But they don't do it in the relevant timeframe to be in any way meaningful, so...
I agree with that. So the one thing that I did want to make a, you know, distinguish here, there's limitations in what you can do under the subdivision control law. Those limitations are not the same when you are sitting as a special permit granting authority. You have much greater and much more, much greater authority and much more discretion. So I don't see any problem with you requiring these, you know, for a subdivision or a non-subdivision that also requires a special permit. If somebody comes in here and they need discretionary relief, you have a great deal of ability to request information.
Yeah, but, but we, but in this particular case, we, the only permit, special permit that we have, I believe, is the aquifer protection. And this is about matters that are not within the scope of aquifer protection.
Paul, in, in the case where we would have the purview under the, under the special, special permit, and we, we approve the subdivision and then find out that there's contamination within the special permit process, aren't our hands tied at that point because we've already approved the layout? We can't change, we can't force them to change the layout?
But you're not required to provide whatever discretionary relief that they need to do the project they're proposing.
So essentially, we would, if we find, if we approve a layout and we find contamination on a specific site, the only recourse we would have is to not approve that site or mitigate it somehow. We wouldn't be able to ask them to change the layout.
Well, I mean, you could ask, I mean, you can ask any applicant, anything, you don't have, so there is, you know, a provision under the subdivision control law for the rescission of an approved subdivision. Now, there's limitations to that because once an applicant puts a mortgage on it, you really can't rescind without the permission of the mortgagie. You know, but there is a way to rescind. So if you were in a position where they hadn't gotten a mortgage yet because it's difficult to get a mortgage when you don't have the special permit relief that you need, and in that process, you make a determination that the subdivision needs to be rescinded, absolutely within your discretion to do so.
What about, for example, Chapter 60, which is hazardous materials? And it doesn't seem, I mean, this is a case, this would be a case where the applicant has not requested for relief from, from a special permit, but can we assert, you know, for example, a provision of Chapter 60 to say that the Board of Health needs to be involved because of the things that have come up during our hearing that should be addressed through that means? I mean, my, my bottom line is, I've already, I've already said, so you know what my bottom line is, and that is that I want the information so that we can make good decisions about the things that we have jurisdiction over. And without that information, I, we, you know, feel that, I don't feel that we would have the information that we need to make good decisions about the things that we have jurisdiction over.
Are you talking about Chapter 63 hazardous materials?
Yes.
So the problem with trying to incorporate that is it's a non-zoning by law.
Right, right.
So that wouldn't fall into enforcement of zoning.
Right.
That is something you are allowed to do as part of your subdivision process. Now, if you identify that some sort of permit is required under this, I mean, I think you could include as a condition that they obtain the permit from the appropriate permit granting authority.
So we would need a, we would need a special permit, I mean, we would need a, a special permit that we don't have right now to do that.
Correct. So, and if you're looking to find a way to do that, that you just need to make sure, as I discussed earlier in the MBTA communities, one of the provisions of Chapter 48 is that it requires uniform districts. And it's been interpreted by the courts to mean that you have to have use allowed as of right in every district. So if you're going to impose a special permit requirement, you've got to make sure that you're doing it in a way that still allows some uses without a special permit. And it can't be just the uses that are required to be allowed or exempt uses that are set forth in Chapter 48, Section 3. It has to be an actual beneficial use. It can't just be, you're allowed to keep this as open space or nursery use or something of that nature. It has to be an actual real use under, under the bylaws, you know, in your use table. But, you know, that is an approach that you can take. You can try to find a way to create some sort of special permit threshold that allows an underlying use but gets at bigger projects. And that would then allow you to tie in the zoning piece to the subdivision piece.
Well, well, back to the current situation then. If this board were to vote to, if the applicant does not provide this information, and if the board were to vote to deny based on the lack of information, is that a position that cannot be supported?
I don't want to say it cannot be supported. I think that the case law is not working in our favor, but nothing's definitive. There's always, you know, ways to shade the analysis, to try to distinguish precedent that goes against you and highlight precedent that's in your favor. So I cannot say outright that it's an indefensible decision. I think that it will be a difficult to defend decision. Plus, I'm never going to say something that's outright. That's a pretty bad position to take.
I also think that we have a responsibility to do what we think is right.
We'll set the precedent.
Not out of not being afraid to end up in court if we think we're doing what's right.
Yep. And you said there's very little cases to support it, so maybe we'll be the first.
On the 21E, there's not a lot of cases.
We'll be the first.
On a turtle study, there's no cases.
Yeah, so regarding the turtle study, that would be a case where, I mean, we already had requested that they, that they need to do a wildlife habitat study for the wetland, for the areas that are under, under the jurisdiction of the CONCOM. And then we had also requested that they extend that to include the upland area or the areas that are not under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, but are under our jurisdiction, and, and they agreed to that. And then I think the, the turtle study came up out of the Conservation Commission, and, but the feeling was that it wouldn't be a meaningful thing to do without the upland piece as well. And so this, this was something to be above and beyond what, what they were required to do for the sort of rare species under the Wetlands Protection Act and MESA. And so those two, so that one, you know, it's more for, again, the similar idea, in my mind, not as, not as critical in the sense that when the first one, we're talking about human health, in the second one, we're talking about protecting the environment. And, and just making sure that, that, you know, again, but a similar theme of information that would help us to make, you know, good decisions about the layout and so forth and so on. So I guess my, my question there is then, your feeling is that that, let me ask you this question. So between the two of them, which of the two do you think is easier to defend?
I think the 21E is probably easier to defend.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't have anything else.
So we beaten that up?
Yeah, I think we probably want to, at some point, think about, you know, what kinds of protections we can put in place that right now make this difficult for us, how could that be easier? So I don't know if you, I don't know if we can ask you to provide us sort of like a framework for, you know, this is, these are the kinds of things that you should look at to, to do. I mean, obviously, this would be a long-term project if we're, you know, but nonetheless, that's certainly something I'd be interested in, in looking into. So if that's a request, that's okay with the, with the board. I'd like to ask Paul to sort of just provide us a framework for what would be, you know, the sort of regulatory, something that would give us a better something that would give us a better regulatory foundation for asking for this kind of information. Since, since I, I mean, we went into it, right, using our own rules and regulations. And, and what this is revealing is that our rules and regulations are not supported by case law. And so we're already going to be looking at our normal, our special permit rules and regulations. We'll also obviously have to be looking at our subdivision rules and regulations. And when we do, then we'll have to adjust those to be in better conformance with case law. But then at the same time, I think we also then need to know what kinds of regulatory stuff do we need to put in place that allows us to do the things that we thought we could do, but now we're being told we can't? So, so if that's okay, I would make that request.
Happy to do so.
Thank you. Really happy?
I'll be amused.
Madam Chair, do you need me for anything else?
Please say.
Well, no, we're going to go to, I do have questions under Hill.
On what?
On when we go to this, this.
This specific case.
Yeah, when we go to the specific case. I wasn't going to bring it up because we weren't discussing it. So if you don't mind, stay in.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so 270 Bill Ricker Road has asked for a continuance.
Make a motion to.
Did you want to, before you, did you want an update?
I would love an update.
On that?
Yeah.
Did you want to?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't remember where we were, where you, where we were last were with you. But we, we, we looked, we, we met to talk about what a sampling plan would be. Actually, well, I mean, Mike can say this just as well. And so we agreed on a, a protocol for what they were going to do. The two major purposes of it were, the first one was to see if the applicant's conceptual site model, conceptual site model is just another way of saying, this is what we think is going on. So don't be intimidated by the conceptual site model, CSM. It's just that, this is their view of what's going on is that there's contamination coming from the groundwater, it's coming from across the street. The results that looked like there was possibly contamination from the septic, the onsite septic, they did not think was a source. But that was a question. And so this testing was, was to also help answer that question. So we, we looked at all sorts of details about how this was going to be conducted. The question of an actual test pit also was brought up. There was, we agreed that there would be one test pit done. We're trying to get someone that was highly qualified in soils evaluation to witness it. We were unable to get someone. It was witnessed by, I think by Beta. And then also this testing was performed. The results of the testing has been provided to us in table form. In reviewing it, we have a number of questions. And those questions have been gathered together and sent to Beta's LSP, LSP's License Site Professional. They're the persons who are sort of running the show, as it were, in the, in the MCP. And think of them as deputized, whatever. Again, it's, they work for the applicant, so that's kind of a strange way to do it, but that's the way they do it. And so we're now waiting to hear back from Beta's LSP of their results. And then likely, we would have another meeting to just go through some of our questions to get the, sort of the, sort of the detailed stuff out of the way. But then it would be my desire that we then bring this back to this board, particularly for us to review the soil management plan because the soil management plan is essentially their way of saying, this is how we're going to handle these issues as we're doing construction. And there, that's where different issues may come up, that where we may say we want to not allow the full, you know, they, they originally came in about two, two and a half to three feet higher. They came in to get, the, the modified permit was to lower the site. And we may, we may, as an outcome, say, well, we actually don't want you to lower it that much. We may actually, whatever. But that's not, those are not the kinds of things I feel comfortable making a decision on. I feel that the board needs to hear it and make those, those kinds of decisions. So that, that would be my recommendation. And then also the stormwater itself. The stormwater really has now become a very, I would say, standard. There isn't any infiltration now, which was a very good move, I think. And so now I think just the review of the stormwater, I think, can pass through the normal board process, that way we normally handle stormwater. So, so my, at least my, my, my recommendation for this plant, for the board is that we have another meeting to resolve the sort of detailed technical stuff. And then we bring, and then it basically comes back to the board for, for, for full board hearing, presentation, all that sort of thing.
So now, is it your understanding that Beta will make a recommendation in terms of, for instance, the height?
Likely not. Likely not. Basically, the Beta LSP, I think, will be commenting on whether the, how well they think the applicant has validated their conceptual site model, whether there is a, a competing conceptual site model that the septic is actually, if, if not the, a partial contributor. And again, that would not be something that we would be regulating, you know, per se. But it's something that we would want to consider in terms of their soil management plan. Like, say, for example, we might say in the locations of the septic, we just want you to assume if you're doing anything there, it's going to be contaminated, as opposed to if you're somewhere else, it's when you get to a certain level, that's when you should assume you're going to, you know. Because again, what we're trying to do is give the person who's constructing this the information they need to know how to handle things. And so, so I don't think the Beta LSP will necessarily be doing that, but he certainly will be providing information. He will, he will very likely be providing information to the board as well in that process, so.
Yeah, and I tell you, if, if you looked at this data that came in, it was pretty obscure.
And there's, there's some mathematical inconsistencies.
We need Beta, Beta LSP to actually.
Go through it.
Filter it and, and give us some notion of what it means. And we can make our own assumptions, but I think this is a job for an expert.
Are they going to give us recommendations about the level of where it should be considered contaminated? And I mean, like, I don't feel.
I mean, we can ask, we can certainly ask.
I would like that.
So I would, I would say that probably that would be the kind of thing that we could bring up in the next. I assume there's, I'm assuming there's going to be at least one more subgroup maybe.
At least one more.
And at that one, we can say that the board has expressed a desire that you give a recommendation on these things.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. So do we need a motion? I'll take a motion to.
Move to continue? Do we have a date for that?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay.
Second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, next on to 10 Hildreth Street. Michael LaFever requesting a six-slot definitive subdivision approval and applicable waivers under subdivision control law and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of the land in the town of Chelmsford as special permit per section Article 14, aquifer protection district. Project calls for construction of a new dead-end roadway and the construction of six duplexes on six new lots. The site is an RC zoning district, approximately 5.07 acres, as shown on Assessor's Parcel ID Map 74, Block 324, Lots 10 and 12. My understanding is that we're going to be discussing the traffic plan?
Yep. So for the record, Brian Goodrow with Hancock Associates representing Michael LaFever with Property Possible, and we have Scott Thornton with VAI, Vanessen Associates. He's our transportation engineer. So our goal for this evening is to have Scott present the traffic and answer any initial questions that the board may have. And then presumably, the board would like to see this go out to peer review. So if we could authorize, you know, Evan to coordinate that, we'll work with Evan to pay the appropriate fee. And then the next time before you, hopefully, we'll have that peer review conducted. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Madam Chair, just, is it appropriate for board me to make a comment now just on the traffic study? Just, I just, just, this isn't directed at Evan, but one of the, one of the issues that I thought of is the traffic study was just released to us. And I'm sure Evan followed it on to us as soon as he received it. But you're talking about a 261-page document. It came out at 3:30 the day before this meeting. It's very hard for the board to, for the board member to digest all of that.
Yeah, I didn't even see that it was there until 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think we should, I mean, I agree with John, like, this is one of those documents that we've said multiple times that we want it banned so we can post it, so the residents can get access to it in time for the meeting. I think it's unfair to the residents and to us. I didn't give it my full attention. I think this shouldn't be presented tonight and should be presented at the next meeting.
I don't disagree. We went over this many times. And this is a glaring example of what we were talking about.
All right, shall we take it around? Start with Paul, we heard what you have to say. John, we heard what you have to say. Anita, heard what you have to say. Mike?
I agree, but I think with the professionals here tonight, it would be nice to hear a high-level summary of what their findings were. We can then review the documents that we have on our, we're not going to make any decisions tonight.
Right, well, we're going to make a decision to authorize the peer review of the document.
No, no.
I, I don't feel comfortable discussing the traffic study nor making a decision on the peer review because I haven't read through the traffic study. And I wouldn't know what to ask the peer reviewer to be looking for. So I don't mind listening to the presentation because they're here, but at the same time, I'm not prepared at all to discuss anything in the presentation or make a decision on the peer review.
Okay. Mike?
Well, I, I sympathize to some degree with that. I, I don't have a problem with kicking off a peer review, but I certainly don't want to be making any decisions tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I agree as well. Okay, so let's listen to the presentation and then we'll table any further discussion about it until the next.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Scott Thornton. I'm with Vanessen Associates. We prepared the traffic assessment for the project that was, we've been discussing. And I've got a few slides just kind of going over, as you mentioned, the high-level view of the, of the traffic study. The components, you know, it's a, it's a fairly robust study for, for the size development, but that's, that's what the board was looking for in the meeting in November. So just to, to go through some of the components of the study, we did the traffic counts during the time periods that were requested. We did those counts at the earliest opportunity that we had, which was December 12th. The sunny weather, good day for December, highs in the mid-40s. We reviewed counts of vehicles, including cars and trucks and buses, pedestrians, bicycles, collected information on roadway width, site distance, transitivity, crash data. We were able to find data. I know there was a, there was concern about the collecting pedestrian volumes in December. We were able to find data to justify adjustment to that data, to the pedestrian data for a seasonal consideration. We also got information on background developments, 270 Bill Ricker Road and one other project. We did do counts, or the counts that we used at the intersections for the study area were used to develop the trip rates for the project rather than, than ITE, which was, which was as requested. And we did some intersection analysis, obviously, and then looked at, looked at some potential ways to address concerns that have been raised for that neighborhood. If you go to the next slide, please? So this slide shows the study area and the locations that were requested, including Hildreth Street with, with Bill Ricker Road, Grove Street with Bill Ricker Road, Purham Street with Bill Ricker Road, those three locations. And then we had Purham Street with Grove Street and also Plum Street with Hildreth intersections. You know, in general, I know there was, there was concern about volumes of cut-through traffic. That was not observed in any of the data. The volumes were, were very low. There were, there were some pedestrians that were observed at some locations, but there were also no pedestrians observed at other locations. Time, the peak hours varied along Bill Ricker Road. We were generally looking in the seven, seven to eight, 7:30 to 8:30 timeframe in the morning and then four to five in the afternoon. In the neighborhood, it, it definitely varied with the time periods. In the, in some locations, 8:15 to 9:15, five to six in the afternoon, or at the Plum Street and Hildreth Street intersection, 6:30 to 7:30 and three to four. So a certain, certainly a wide variation in peak hours. But we used whatever was the highest peak hour whenever that occurred. That's what we used in the analysis. If you could go to the, and just keeping it high-level, we'll just go through these slides. So the, the trip generation, again, was based on the counts that we had conducted. We sort of, we looked at the, at the volumes at those intersections coming into the neighborhood and determined that the peak hour for the neighborhood was between eight and nine in the morning and between five and six in the afternoon. That's what we used for the, for the, to develop the trip rates. Those are higher than the ITE trip rates that we would use. But I would note that there's a lot of attached and detached units in the neighborhood. And the attached units typically generate much more traffic than, than the, sorry, the detached units typically generate more traffic than the attached units, whether it's because of bedroom count or, or just number of people living in the, in the residence. The attached units generate trips at a lower rate. And what's proposed is a, is a duplex type of development. However, we used the rates that we observed and that gives us a total of eight trips in the morning peak hour and 15 trips in the evening peak hour. We assigned that traffic to the study area intersections, looking at the 2023 and the 20, 2023 build condition and the 2030 build condition, as well as the no-build conditions, the existing conditions. Not surprisingly, with these kinds of numbers, no change in level of service, no change in queuing, no change, really minimal changes in delay. Could you go to the next slide, please? What we found, just to summarize, no, no congestion currently in the neighborhood and the site would not create any congestion. No change in level of service, as I mentioned. Traffic volume increases 0.2% to 0.7% external in the study area during the peak hours. Pedestrian bicycle activity is minimal during the peak hours of the traffic generation for the neighborhood. As I mentioned, we did not see any sign of, of cut-through traffic. General, the travel speeds were below, actually, all travel speeds were below the 30 mile an hour prima facie speed limit. And in general, they were averaging about 19 to 20 miles per hour through the study area. We had identified a number of things that the town may want to consider. If you could go to the, to the next slide. A couple one-way circulation patterns were things that we looked at. Not in detail because they're the kinds of things that town staff and departments should really be consulted on. We noticed that coming, that, that one, one potential pattern could be one way from Bill Ricker Road down Purham through Plum. one way from Bill Ricker Road down Purham through Plum, continuing up to Hildreth Street. Problem with that type of circulation is, or it's really a consequence of any one-way pattern. All the traffic from one, from one side may get shifted, would get shifted to another side. We looked at the, the one-way circulation, specifically Grove Street at Bill Ricker Road. The Grove Street intersection with Bill Ricker Road was, was really the, the one that we identified as not meeting site distance requirements. And, and we thought that what, the town may want to consider a one-way pattern going from Bill Ricker Road to Purham Street on Grove Street. So that would have no exiting vehicles coming out the Grove Street approach to Bill Ricker Road. There's, there's a few, obviously, you know, these, these are measures that, you know, would, would affect the travel patterns of, of people in the neighborhood. The other thing we looked at was a, a potential neighborhood signage plan. If you could go to the next slide, please. And what this calls for is a, is a number of signs where, where the roadway width is, is narrowing or where there's a, where there's a decrease in the road width at certain locations. We got them on, on Hildreth Street. We've also got them on Grove Street. We had also identified, again, although we, we didn't see evidence of it, the, there was concern about other users of the streets, people riding bicycles or, or children in the streets. So we, we thought some signs for sharing the road would be appropriate. Also, some children playing signs which would have LED flashers, like a solar, solar-powered LED flashers to increase visibility. Something like that would be appropriate. And there's really not a lot of signage for, for road conditions in the neighborhood. So we thought that this would be, you know, this type of measure would be appropriate. I think that's it for the, for the traffic presentation.
So can I ask just a couple of questions? I just, I mean, I know we're going to review the report still. So when you mentioned early on the counts that you did there, did you do them in phases? Did you do all these five locations, six locations at one time?
All at one time.
All at one time, so you had personnel in all those areas?
Yeah, well, we had, we've got, we had cameras out there that observed the vehicles and.
Then how do you judge the speed?
We had somebody out there with a radar gun.
You did, okay.
And I will say it, it, he had to go out there multiple times to get enough measurements just because there, there wasn't that much traffic that was going through the neighborhood. So he went out there on two separate days.
Okay. Can you go back to the conclusions for a minute? Again, I haven't read the study, so I haven't looked at the details, but you said that the volume increases are .2 to .7 external to the study area.
Yeah, outside of the neighborhood.
What about internal to the neighborhood?
In, in some locations, I mean, they're, they're higher on, obviously, on Hildreth Street, we, we were expecting a lot of the traffic to go on Hildreth Street. So there would be, you know, there would be a higher volume increase there.
Okay, because I think most of the concern that we have is internal to the neighborhood and not external.
Yeah, yeah.
So the conclusion that I would like to see there when we discuss it next time is that what's, what's the volume increase internal to the neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's just a, that's a standard, it's a standard bit of information that goes in traffic studies.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
I guess I'll take a motion to continue the.
Before we do that, I do have a question that came up in the conservation meeting last night. It was mentioned, they can, they continue the hearing as well, but they did mention the fact that they're continuing the hearing because there was a potential change in the number of units because of the natural heritage work that they're doing. So my question is, can we get any information from the applicant about a potential change in layout and units? And if so, do we still want to move forward with any other studies? If there's going to be a change in layout?
Yeah, so natural heritage, we're, the process is still ongoing. We have a conference call, hopefully scheduled for this week, within the next two days, to discuss what they would like to see for potential reduction in disturbed areas within the polygon. So as soon as we have kind of hashed things out a little bit better, we'll be releasing revised plans for any of those changes. In terms of studies, if there was a reduction in units or size of project, it wouldn't affect the transportation that we're doing because we're studying it at a higher threshold right now. So it would be reducing those impacts. So I don't think that pausing or changing kind of our process here is, is going to amount to anything.
So if we were to go ahead with next meeting a traffic review, peer review, and we find certain mitigations would be needed at this level of traffic, would, would you be willing to accept those measures? Or would you want to cut them back because the volume would be decreased?
No, because as Scott said, the, the volumes of this project are so small to begin with, whatever mitigations that we feel are appropriate at this density going down from there, it's, it's not going to change that. So if the board feels it's appropriate at six lots, would they still feel it's appropriate at two, probably, so.
Anita, did you have a question for?
I, I did. So one of my concerns with this project is not like the layout necessarily of the project itself, right? Like the width of the street and stuff, is the width of Hildreth.
Is, I'm trying to wait, what?
Is the width of Hildreth, right? Which they, this, this development has to come up to, right? Because cars have to go up Hildreth to get out. That's going to be their road. And based off of what we just read, is that, like, I'm looking at this, like, the width here, we've got 15 feet, 16 feet. My car is six and a half feet wide, standard truck is seven. All right, pickup truck, I just.
Suggesting a one-way.
But is that a reason for us to, when looking at that, to deny? Because we're doubling, because A, this was built in, this subdivision was done in the 50s. Like this, these houses came in, this area was developed in the 50s. They're doubling the number of units on this street. Like, when you look at it, they go from 16 and we're adding 12. We're almost doubling it. Based off what you just read, is that a reason, a valid reason to request less, I guess, less subdivisions or less impact?
I mean, it's really going to get down to an analysis as to whether or not the number of units that's being added creates a safety concern that doesn't already exist. First of all, we need to address whether or not Hildreth Street is a public way or a private way or some combination of the two. And I know that there was a question from DPW about that at one point. And I don't know that we've fully addressed that yet.
No, didn't know that.
Yeah, I didn't know that either.
What are the issues associated with that, whether it's public or private or?
Well, I think that you're more limited if it's an accepted public way. Whereas if it is a private way, then subdivision control law, you would have some ability to look at whether there is adequate access.
So it sounds like a priority.
Yeah, we should find out.
And I will, I will need to take some time to actually review some case law to answer your question more definitively. I believe that there probably is a threshold. I don't know, I can't say whether or not we're at it, but I think that there probably is a threshold where a public way is safe under existing conditions, but under proposed conditions will become unsafe. And if that were the case, I think you would have the ability to limit or deny additional units there. But I would definitely need to take a look and see.
Yeah, just, just because I happen to live on a very narrow street. It's only three houses, but it's actually like 14 feet wide, right? Like, that was, so this kind of, you know, when it was built back in the 50s, the cars were smaller, right? They weren't like, and there wasn't as much traffic and it was different, right? And it was a long time ago and things have changed and just doesn't seem right to, just because, you know, that's the size of the street, then we keep on adding more and more house. Like, at some point, it just seems that we would say, okay, yes, it was safe back then and this was what they put in and these houses are grandfathered in here.
Well, I, I don't think it's a look at, back at whether it was safe back then. The question is whether it's safe currently and whether it will continue to be safe under the proposed condition.
Yeah, because it's not like it's 20 feet versus like the standard 24, right? Like, it's not like we're saying, okay, the whole street's 20, but I mean, there are, like, it gets narrow. And there've been some residents who've even said it gets narrower than that. And I don't necessarily disagree because I, I live on a street that is very narrow. So it just, I just want to make sure that, like, we're not creating more problems. And, you know, what is our ability under the law to do that?
I do remember the conversation regarding public and private because going down that street, the mailboxes stop halfway down. And I asked that question in a meeting. And it wasn't because, and I believe the rest of the road is private.
The very end of it.
They can't fit.
Streetcar reverse.
Shh, no, no, don't let him in. So that, that's a question we need to.
Because I was wondering the question that some, some of the homes have mailboxes and then at the end, in the middle halfway down, there's a bunch of mailboxes for the rest of the homes.
Well, let's see if we can get an answer to that question.
So I was aware that you were, you were engaged with DPW of what's your understanding as to what needs to be done to?
I'll have to reengage. I don't know that we ever really came to a resolution on it.
Okay, I mean, that seems pretty important as part of this whole traffic discussion. And then on the safety, what, what kind, can you describe like what, what a traditional typical methodology would be? Is it simply the applicant has submitted their traffic study? The board's going to hire a peer review consultant, which simply reviews what they submit? Or is there something in addition to the, these two traffic engineers in order to determine whether it's, whether the existing conditions are safe?
Right, that, the way you framed it, Paul, that, you know, we need to determine if it's safe under existing conditions but potentially unsafe under the proposed conditions. That was a different framing than I have heard prior to this. And, yeah, I would be interested in the answer to that question and how is that answer illuminated?
Well, I mean, I, I think that that is something that you're going to want to ask your peer review consultants to look into.
Which we kind of did at the very beginning when we were laying it out. That was.
You're suggesting the, the traditional elements that are within the traffic impact report that were submitted and initially presented tonight, many of those elements or factors would be used to determine existing safety and, and future conditions related to safety.
And I think I did provide a copy of a road safety audit.
Yes.
That was done in another town that I was involved with.
Yeah, you did.
You know, and, and they looked at narrow roadways as, as part of their analysis. And it, and it's not just width of the roadway, although obviously you need, if it's going to be a two-way street, you, you need a certain amount of width to allow two cars to pass each other safely. But there are also other factors and concerns, you know, when you're looking at the roadway as to whether or not it's safe. You know, you could have slopes, you know, you could have protrusions into the roadway, things that, you know, narrow it in certain areas and not in others. It all should be reviewed as part of the, the peer review.
So to Chris's point, it sounds like between now and the 24th, that's the level of detail board members need to take to review what was submitted, compare that to what the board actually asked for. We may need some additional information.
Because I thought that, I thought before we started the study, I thought I said that that was one thing that I specifically wanted to know was.
You did.
Is, yeah, is it going to, is by adding this, is it going to make it unsafe? And so that, that's in part what I was wanting to start to look for. But it seems like it's a little bit of a, out of the beaten path for usual traffic analysis. And I think that's what makes it kind of a unique problem, so. But that is, that is the question. I mean, Paul phrased it exactly. That is the question we're trying to answer. And less so about the sort of more typical traffic things like level of service and so on and so on. We're really just concerned about increasing it, what does that have to do with safety? So appreciate Anita bringing that up.
Okay.
Public input?
Can I ask Paul one more question, but it's not on traffic, but it's still on this? Just from my own understanding, since he's here, do you mind if I ask him one more question?
Yeah, of course.
So this subdivision has the septic under the driveway, which per, I think I read someplace, right? That our preference is not have it under the driveway, but to have it in the yard. Right, because, but they can go through a, like a, like special request or some sort of path to get it approved. Is that something that we need to take into consideration in this?
Well, ultimately, approval of the septic system is the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. If they sign off and say that the septic is acceptable, that ties your hands on that issue.
Okay. So even if it's, so if we approve the subdivision and then they say that, no, it's not.
If you approve the subdivision and Board of Health doesn't approve.
Approve the septic, then they have to come back.
They don't have a project.
Okay, all right, that's, okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, are we going to take?
Do we want resident input on?
Public input, that all these people are here. I, I don't want it to go on until the cows come home. But I feel like these people have sat here and waited and listened and we should give them an opportunity to express their thoughts. I think mostly on the traffic. So if people have something to say about the traffic and/or the traffic safety study, if you had a chance to look at it.
I'd just say that according to Town Hall late yesterday afternoon, we were informed that even if the traffic study did come in, it would not be discussed tonight because people would not have a chance to review it. So we have not seen it.
Name an address, please.
Lynda Carney, I'm sorry. 17 Hildreth and 19 Plum. I'm sorry, but just to preface the other resident.
No, we haven't did either.
I know, I understand that, but we were told that it wouldn't be discussed tonight. So please forgive us if we bring up something that you're not expecting.
Okay.
As the board knows, I did forward it out as soon as I received it. I did not post it to, we did not post a revised agenda based upon the board's policy.
Right. No, I'm, I'm glad we heard what we did.
Right.
To have some understanding, but yeah, we got to revisit this next time.
Okay.
So we're going to keep comments to three minutes per person if possible?
It'll be less than that.
Kevin, 11 Hildreth, I'm right across the street from where the proposed project is. But obviously, I've just saw this traffic study firsthand like you did. Comments on the signs, you know, street narrowed. All Zach's going to do is put more traffic on my front yard. I've already lost quite a bit of front yard from people not having enough room. I'll bring pictures next time when we review it on the 24th. But when I first moved in there, my property was already all the way to the street. I could cut my lawn. I've lost probably two feet from cars not having enough room going up on my front lawn. My whole frontage of my yard is basically all dirt, probably about two to two and a half feet off from where the hot top is. Putting signs up there is not going to do anything. Again, the other signs I saw about children playing, flashing lights, well, that's wonderful. But what happens if it's, you know, entering into your living room, disturbing your sleep? You know, so I, I just think those are just Band-Aids. And that's just my opinion. But again, I'm going to review it, just like you people are going to do it. I'll be back on the 24th with more comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? I'm Justin, 26 Silver Street. I bought the property. A couple of things I, that come to mind when thinking about the, what was shown for the traffic review is it's done December 14th. I don't know how you would expect to see normal. normal traffic during the day in the middle of December with a neighborhood that's filled with kids. Kind of makes common sense that if you did it sometime in like the spring or the summer, where there is more kids like out utilizing the roads around there, is that you'll probably see quite an uptick from all the children in the neighborhood, because the children in the neighborhood are quite abundant at this point. And they all use Hildreth Street to go up and down to the school, whether it's to use the playground there, or to use the basketball courts. That just doesn't make any sense to me. In terms of the width of the road as well, we just had a recent snowstorm. You can shave about two and a half feet off the width in just about every direction. If you get stuck there, you're pushing cars out, or you're tearing up somebody's front lawn, trying to drive out of it. The signs, it just sounds like a bastardization of our neighborhood. Blinking lights everywhere, who the hell wants that? It's a quiet neighborhood. We don't have that crap anywhere. And this is the only reason that we'd have to suffer with that, is one-way roads, blinking lights across the neighborhood. But just, that's just my input. Thanks for hearing.
Hello. I'm Kristy Wood from sixteen Hildreth Street. Real quick comment. On Monday, after the snowstorm, I went out and measured at different points. And at the narrowest point that I could see, I measured, and there was, it was twelve and a half feet. So that's pretty narrow. So I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm short. Marcy Comtoys, twenty-four Hildreth Street. Just two cookthings. As a parent, a little concerned with the traffic study being done in December as it is. At four o'clock, it's dark. Our kids are not playing in the neighborhood. If you, again, as my neighbor, Justin, said, if you were out in the springtime at four o'clock, my neighborhood's filled with children. So you are not getting a true representation of the neighborhood, especially when it comes to people using the neighborhood. I myself, my teenage children, my parents, we ride our bikes. We're not doing it in December. We're not doing it at four o'clock at night, when it is dark out. Second, this idea of making Hildreth Street and that whole area a one-way, how are you going to do that? Because Hildreth Street has a dead end. If you make it a one-way heading to Billerica Road, how do I get to my house? How do my neighbors, the Woods, get to the house? The Johnsons get to the house? We can't have a one-way street there, because there's no other exit or entrance to our street, except from the top of Hildreth Street. So if Hildreth is one-way going to Billerica Road, where do we go? You're going to now make the street one-way in one section, two-way in another section? That's just going to confuse the neighborhood and people that use it. So I don't even think that's something that should be looked at at this point in time. Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Wood, sixteen Hildreth Street. I know they talked about the volumes of the street, and I don't think they take into account. Right now, there's six people on our, six residents, I consider retired, they're not using the street. Their residents could change down the road. That's going to increase our traffic. And the reason it works right now, and has worked, is because of the low volume. I could, when I first moved in, I could look up the street and say, oh, it's clear. And I could make it all the way up. Now, it's not quite like, oh, I can make it to the next stop. I can make it to Kevin's house and pull in his yard, because I see someone else come. You know the spots to pull in. And it's just, I don't care what they say, twelve more units are going to, you're not going to have any more spots to dodge the next car coming up. It just got feasible. And just another information point about the, is it accepted or not accepted? Mr. Byham used to live on the corner of Hildreth and Plum, and he used to come over and laugh at me. He says, you guys get, you have to put your, the mailboxes all in the corner. You guys are the accepted part of the street. I get it delivered. He's, he worked for the postal service, Mr. Byham, you know, from Byham School. He would laugh, like, you guys don't get to, you are an accepted part of the street, and I'm not. He used to laugh and tell me that story, you know? And recently, we got trashed, because they said our part was accepted. Now we get trash pickup for the first time in thirty years. And the other part's not, and they'd laugh at us again. So I, these, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I've been brought up and out hearing for the last thirty years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Aaron Cunningham, sixty-seven Billerica, so corner of Purham and Billerica, so I kind of represent the other end of the neighborhood. Didn't get a chance to read the study. I will say I was pleasantly surprised that all the cameras were put up at intersections that I thought they needed to be put up. I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't study traffic. I observe a lot of traffic, because I work from home. And as I've said before to the board and in the neighborhood here, one day, December, it just, to me, doesn't feel representative. So I think although they captured all the areas I was hoping to be captured, they didn't capture the quantity of data that I was hoping. I can, I can look the traffic folks right in the face. The neighborhood gets cut through. The fire station stops. There's an accident at Golden Cove. The buses are showing up, dropping off at center. People will cut through. Maybe they're slow at this time of year, but they're not always slow. So I'll go ahead and review the study. If I have any comments, I'll get back to you. But I would urge that it's, they kind of got it, but I don't feel like there was enough data where I would be comfortable making any sort of decisions if I were on the board. And finally, I would not support one-way direction, because he's correct. It's just going to force traffic. It's going to force a problem from one to the other. So I don't want any unintended consequences. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, I don't, Paul, I don't think we need you anymore.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Paul.
All right.
You have to go home and have dinner.
Continue?
I'll take a motion to continue.
Well, first, you have to close...
No, it's, continue.
So move, what'll be to the twenty-something?
Twenty, twenty-fourth second?
Second.
Second.
On favor?
No, two weeks from tonight, it's twenty-fourth.
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
No opposed, unanimous. Okay, onward. Ninety-three Brick Hill Road. Give you guys a minute to file out while I read the announcement. DND Homes LLC requesting site plan approval for the construction of a forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten square foot industrial warehouse building with integrated surface parking, loading facilities, and onsite infrastructure improvements. The site is located in the IA zoning district, as shown as parcel ID map eighty-eight, block two seventy-one, lot three, and consists of approximately nine point six three acres. The applicant requests special permits per Article eleven, major business complex, Article fourteen, aquifer protection, Article five, off-street parking and loading, and site plan review per Section one ninety-five dash one oh four, and any other permit relief team necessary under zoning bylaw to allow the proposed project.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. For the record, Christine Hung, attorney at Reber and Bronstein. With me tonight, I have Brian Goudreau from Hancock Associates, our site civil engineer. We're here tonight just to give you an update from our last hearing. And Brian is here to give an update on stormwater, CONCOM, and Board of Health. At the last hearing, you may recall, our traffic engineer gave his report, and there was a discussion regarding the peer review, and whether it be a limited or a full. Evan reached out to the town of Billerica, as did our traffic engineer, and they did want to have that intersection in Billerica between, you know, the one twenty-nine and Brick Hill intersection be studied as part of the peer review. So Beta is, has been engaged and is undergoing that peer review process. We don't, we have not received the report yet. Evan, I don't know if they had given you any indication of when we might receive the report, but we're still waiting on that.
Yeah, I thought it, I thought it would be here prior to this evening, but I would think within, within a week, probably.
Okay. So hopefully, at the next hearing, we'll be able to respond to that traffic peer review. So that's the update that I have with respect to traffic. And then I'll turn it over now to Brian to give an update on the other matters. Thank you.
I just wanted to quickly say, while I stood there, to thank you for the work that you're doing with the turtle nesting area on the site. That's much appreciated by those of us who are concerned about that. So, thank you.
Turtle huggers.
Thank you.
So, for the record, Brian Goudreau, Hancock Associates. So to kind of briefly go over the, the couple of, few parallel processes that we're in right now, starting with Board of Health. We're in the groundwater protection zone, so we're required to conduct a hydrogeologic study. We have HydroGeoCyclones, our hydrogeologic consultants on this. They developed a scope of work. We went to the Board of Health to have it approved before we installed monitoring wells and conducted testing. During that process, they requested that we sample soil in three specific locations. So in addition to groundwater monitoring, we are including soil sampling. That was approved before Christmas. The wells were installed between Christmas and New Year's, and monitoring is ongoing right now. We anticipate a report to be issued in the coming weeks. With respect to conservation, we've had a couple of different meetings. And as Joel pointed out, we have a traffic, or excuse me, a turtle habitat mitigation plan. So there's a portion in the rear of the site, outside of full site build-out, outside of the parking lot, that is proposed back there. We're creating a habitat area. And, and we're currently going back and forth right now with the commission, hashing out the details. Also, as a part of that, peer review was conducted jointly for this board, as well as the commission. So we've received peer review comments. At a high level, I can summarize those. There were two kind of specific items onsite that we needed to address design-wise, one being conduct additional soil testing. The commission had asked for it, this board had asked for it. So we went out there before Christmas with the peer reviewer, and also with DPW witnessing the soil testing along with us. We dug three deep test holes in four, in three of the five proposed systems, and one deep test hole in two of the small systems out by UPS Road. This was discussed with the peer reviewer. He felt all of that was appropriate. When we, we had the, this most recent round of witness testing, results were consistent with what our original design basis was. Peer reviewer concurred with us in the field, and the new plans reflect that. So there were no design changes based on additional soil testing. Other comments that the peer reviewer had, he was questioning our pretreatment practice. So the underground systems consist of storm tech chambers configured in an isolator row. An isolator row is the first inlet row, or any inlet row, wrapped with geotextile that creates a filtering media to clean storm water before it goes and infiltrates into the surrounding soils. There was kind of a question or confusion about whether that counted as a pretreatment practice. Ultimately, we decided to include an additional structure in each one of these systems upstream. So we were proposing hydrodynamic separators within all of these systems, and that exceeded the ninety percent local TSS, and then the forty-four percent pretreatment TSS that's required as a part of Zone Two. Peer reviewer also mentioned some ENS erosion sedimentation control changes, add additional silt stacks within UPS Road. He wanted to see design velocities for all of the pipes to make sure that they were sized appropriately. We gave that to him. And then, just the general, more conservation specific item was the notice of intent checklist. So there's a very specific DEP checklist form that we have to go through, that goes through all of the, the eight, excuse me, nine stormwater management standards, and, and item by item shows how we're compliant with that. So we had revised our plan set, included that additional testing information, made all those changes, and responded to the comments. I had submitted that to Evan, kind of when that went to the Conservation Commission as well. And then...
I'm sorry, that wasn't in our new documents, was it?
You know, I'm, honestly, I'm a little confused as to, I asked David to send me whatever was submitted to the CONCOM. So you're saying...
Okay. I don't, I don't think we have a revised plan set.
Nope. I was going to ask that tonight.
No, we definitely do not have a revised plan set.
The last set we have is, I think, August.
So the current date is twelve twenty-eight twenty-three, and that's the one that went to the Conservation Commission. So tomorrow, when I get back to the office, I'll make sure that this board has the full plan set, and will resend all of our peer review comments and responses along with it. So apologies if there was a confusion.
So just remind me, the commission has engaged with the stormwater peer review consultant?
Correct.
Planning board has not?
It was, my understanding, it was the same peer reviewer.
Right, right, right. But the, the commission has face-to-face engaged, their public hearing...
Understood. Okay.
I don't think planning board has yet.
No.
Okay.
And I would think we would want to...
Yeah, I mean, I think commission's kind of taking the lead.
Yeah.
But at some point, the planning board needs to...
I agree.
Okay.
So I guess my question would be, at what point do we do that now that we've responded?
My suggestion is, it sounds like planning board's priority is traffic. Stormwater likely resolves itself. The commission hasn't identified any deal breakers yet. That'd be my suggestion, that on the twenty-fourth, ideally, we'll have the beta peer review back, be able to focus on traffic, and at least advance that a bit.
Well, I mean, certainly, once we get the plans, we can see if there's anything that we want to, you know, highlight.
If you, if you send me those plans, I'll send them right out to the board. It'll have, it's only two weeks.
Otherwise, I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, well, there's a couple other changes on the plan set that you apparently don't have. If you want me to keep going, I can summarize them. There, it was really only about three items that we had identified during our first meeting here. Concerns that the board had that we, we've addressed in some fashion, one being snow storage, two being the walls, and third being curbing that's associated with stormwater inlets. So we're now identifying all the snow storage areas across the site within both Phase One and Phase Two. They are in, located in areas that are pitched towards pavement or towards yard drains, so that snow melt will be collected by all the stormwater management proposed onsite to be treated before it's ultimately discharged. The walls are specifically called out to have a traffic impact barrier, a guardrail, as well as fencing for fall protection. And then the curbing, we looked across the entire site, especially at areas with catch basin inlets, to understand where, if there was a curbing failure, potentially runoff would bypass the system and potentially go over the wall. In those locations, we have now proposed vertical concrete curbing versus Cape Cod curbing throughout the rest of the site. And that is my summary for this evening. So I apologize about not issuing plan set or the confusion associated with that, but we'll get it to the board as soon as tomorrow.
Okay. Want to make a motion to continue?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
This is going to be a long meeting.
That's going to be a big meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have a new public hearing. Sixty-six Parkhurst Walmart Stores requesting a store remodel and parking lot improvements to accommodate a designated online order pickup area. The project requires a minor site plan per Section one ninety-five dash one oh four G, and any other zoning relief team necessary. The site is located in the CC zoning district, and is shown as parcel ID map thirty-two, block one oh nine, lot one, and consists of approximately eighteen point five acres.
Okay.
Tight quarters over here. Good evening. Jim Cranston with Bowler Engineering, representing Walmart this evening. We are here for a minor site plan review for some improvements at the existing shopping center. They're essentially proposing a remodel to the store, both interior and exterior of the site, which also includes some parking lot improvements. The more basic parking lot improvements that are planned are basically restriping and signage, new signage installation at the stop intersections at the limits of the Walmart parking premise. And they're also revisiting pedestrian crosswalk scenarios at the front vest... And they're also revisiting pedestrian crosswalk scenarios at the front vestibule for the store entrance. The other changes that are planned here are associated with their online pickup feature. The existing store, I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, there are seven existing pickup spaces out front, literally right here in the main parking field, right behind this ADA parking. As part of the improvements, they're looking to make it more efficient from an operational perspective relative to the store associates and how they work within the store and then bring the goods to the customers under the existing condition. Basically, the associates need to bring the goods out the front door, walking in the main aisle with all the other customers. And this is really prime parking for, you know, retail customers. So what we're looking to do is consolidate and relocate the pickup feature for parking in the backyard. We're not looking to increase the number of spaces. We would stay with the seven spaces that are out there today. As part of these improvements, we would not reduce the number of spaces on the site. It's a net wash. I do want to point out, since the initial application was made, we got some survey updates over here because of the improvements. And I don't know if this was mentioned to you or not, we did provide a supplemental or an updated plan on Friday, the 5th, which is included in that packet or the links that are included for the plan that was revised. And that's actually shown on your screen right now. And the reason why, what I want to point that out, and I'm gonna change plans here, if you want to pull up, actually, I don't think you have this on, on your computer. This is an aerial showing the existing site. This is the area that we're looking to put the pickup parking in the back. I just want to point out that right now, there's a, there's an existing pinch point at this rear drive aisle. The initial plans that were submitted were based on record plans and it showed this to be very wide. Based on the survey, this pinch point is about 22.6 feet in width. In order for us to construct the ramp for the associates, which is included on, on that sheet, we would be reducing that pinch point by 2.1 feet. This was reviewed by fire. We provided them with a truck turn showing how much clearance there is. It still complies with an FPA where you need 20 feet of minimum clear. We don't foresee it being a major issue. This is an isolated area. There's 12 spaces here behind this building. There's really no access back here. This is restricted for emergency vehicles only. So we don't see this pinch point as being a major concern, but did want to point that out.
So I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm dull-witted, but I'm not understanding where the cars are gonna come for the pickup.
Okay, that's a great question. So included in the set is there's a wayfinding plan. It's towards the back a little bit. Do you want to pull that up? We're basically, there you go. So-
The pickup feature-
You know, not every customer uses it. I think they're repeat customers. So there will be a learning curve once this is relocated. This plan basically shows where we're adding directional signs throughout the parking lot. And it basically will identify where pickup is. It's literally a blue sign that says pickup and then there will be directional arrows should you enter from the main site driveway.
It's all coming from Parkhurst is what's being proposed.
Right, where I park right now.
But then, yeah, that's the thing that-
That's the sneak-in park, the sneak-in parking.
You take away my parking.
It's currently in the front and they're proposing to isolate it in the back.
I don't do online.
I thought you said that that over to the left is restricted emergency.
I'm gonna-
Exactly.
So I, I'll go over that. So if you were to enter off of Drum Hill and you come into the site, you'll see these directional signs that will navigate you to the back. Over time, once, again, the repeat customers-
Sure.
You're gonna learn, all right, where's pickup? Well, you're probably then gonna drive down Parkhurst versus driving through the site, whatever's gonna be most convenient. There's one large dedicated site driveway here for direct access, where should customers come in back here, they would just navigate around the back.
That makes sense. It takes all that-
And then to leave-
Busy parking lot.
It's a straight shot out to the back. So I think circulation-wise, it's definitely gonna free this up, make it, you know, better experience up front and having it consolidated, we think, is probably the better operational route to go.
So where are they gonna come out again?
So coming out, they would have to exit here. We actually added three signs at the building that point out pickup exit to rear with an arrow pointing to the right.
So they'll have to turn around back there?
So this shaded area is the dedicated parking, so they wouldn't have to turn around. That when they leave the space, they would essentially head-
Oh, okay, gotcha. All right, I'm sorry, that's what I was missing.
Yep, there is a one-way alleyway in the back.
Right.
It's overgrown, there are signs unauthorized, you know, no author-
Yeah.
It used to be a cutthroat.
It used to be a cutthroat.
So-
So you're just, you're gonna park, I was, I was imagining it like you drive up, you pick up and you come around. Never mind, I get it.
It's, it's literally a, just a wider parking space. Customers are not expected to leave their car. They cannot enter the building.
Right.
It's not a public entrance. There are no changes to impervious coverage relative to the building elevations. Elevations were included. They're gonna be, you know, redoing the paint, the paint scheme on the front with a blue theme, some new wall signage, which ends up being a reduction in wall signage, just to freshen up the site and the operation.
So the supercenter, is it considered a supercenter now or it's going to be once we put this in?
If there's grocery in there now, then it's already a supercenter. I'm not aware of them changing the existing uses inside the store. It's just a refresh and a remodel.
What's the average time a person's there for pickup versus ordinary, you know, just ordinary shopping?
I've only personally used it once. You get to the space, you literally click on the email you got or you call the number and within five minutes, the associate's walking out with your product.
Right, so it's gonna be a lot more turnover, it's gonna be a lot of traffic going back and forth back there.
Could add traffic to Parkhurst is the only drawback.
Well, I'm just thinking it's a tight space for having a lot of in and out going on because it's not like normal shopping where you go there and then you're out, you, you-
Yeah.
Drive around.
The turnover for those number of spots is fairly, is fairly long, yeah.
The good news, this rear aisle is actually 28 feet. The pinch point, there's only this one area where there's that pinch point. So 28 feet for, for two ways access is pretty generous, which is definitely wider than what's out here now.
Is there gonna be anything, any signage or anything preventing people from going, trying to go out that way?
So, again, we added signs saying exit this direction, you know, happy to add additional signs that might face this way, but I'm not sure what it would, what it would say because technically, these are parking spaces, right? So, you know, happy to add some additional signage if needed, maybe back here.
It's there.
I think there is some now.
There, it's pretty clear.
I personally don't think I'd want to drive my car back there. It's, it's super narrow.
No, we used to, it was a good cutthroat.
Are those parking spaces back there restricted to employees of the stores along there or is it open to anybody?
So I, I would imagine the only people parking back here would be employees. I'm not aware of any public entrances. I know there's this alleyway you can walk, but I would imagine that these are basically employee spaces.
I've parked back there.
And you said there's also gonna be an internal, an interior remodel?
Right, so there, there would be a building permit application submitted and I think they actually already submitted it.
They cleared out all those, that corner, I went in looking for a brush for my car and that whole seasonal area is empty right now, so they moved them forward.
Yeah, there's, there's a building permit. And as you know, I mean, this Walmart seems to be always being remodeled.
I, I don't go to Walmart, so I don't know.
Perpetually being remodeled, that's why there's, that's why there's storage containers in the back.
She goes to Target.
Are people leaving? Do they have to go through that Parker Street exit or can they go around?
They could drive this way if they wanted to.
Okay.
There's just a lot of-
It's narrow, but good.
There's trucks back there.
Yeah, it's-
We did get some staff comment letters in. I don't know if you've seen them or if you want me to go over that.
I've got some letters here.
I'm happy to address those as, as conditions if needed. They seem pretty straightforward. The biggest thing was the O&M that we've been trying to get from the landlord and have not been able to get it, but I think if you tie our hands and say we need it to be able to start construction, then we need it to start construction.
What was the, what was the difference between the two site plans, the revised site plan?
Yep, so the difference was on this side of the building, the original design we submitted was based on a record design plan. This row of parking next to the property is actually further-
Okay.
-north.
So it's just a dimensional change and not-
Correct, that, that, and we wanted to make sure that there was really a drain line that runs through here.
Okay.
Because we're tying our, the canopy that's over the associate walkway, we're tying in the drainage of the canopy into that pipe. We didn't want to make a guess, so we wanted to make sure that there was really a pipe there we could connect to.
My only concern was around that stop sign. The fact that there's a speed bump right at the stop sign, it would cause people to potentially have weird starts and stops.
So, so I, I misspoke. The other change, we moved that stop sign, we moved it past the speed bump. So that when you're stopping, you can actually see, you know, again, this alley is not for cars, but we felt that if you were stopped where we had the original design, you might not be able to see here. So now the stop sign is about 15 feet past the, the speed bump.
Oh, good.
So that might address your concern.
Yep.
Good comment.
People do drive down that alley and everything too.
Yep.
Really?
Spin scene.
I've seen it personally.
There are signs, I did see signs there.
Anyone have any further comments or questions for the applicant?
No, I have a few things to read into the record, if I may.
Absolutely.
Okay, this is from DPW. I'll just read the concern. All existing and/or proposed utilities should be clearly and accurately labeled, size materially, existing, proposed, rim, invert, et cetera, on the drawing reflecting the most updated utility connections and sizing. Probably already seen that one. Fire. Fire department access is adequate. Fire lanes once created must be maintained. Exists in the modified, exits in the modified space must maintain a continuous path from the exit to a path or driveway that allows access to a public way, which I think it does. This office would approve this plan with these conditions and I ask the board to make this letter part of their approval process. Ryan Hool. Let's fire. From the building inspector, please be advised that any exterior modifications that might include parking spaces, canopies, railings, loading docks, need to comply with all zoning and code requirements. Feel free to reach out should you have any questions, comments, or concerns. Thank you, Jose Negro. And Board of Health, no comments. Police, no comments.
The only thing I would ask that we do address, maybe a special condition if we're approving this tonight, is the O&M needs to be updated per the DPW request with clear ownership of responsibility.
This being a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who would like to, should we, first of all, should we open up the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Aye.
Anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Unanimous, okay.
I think all this needs a motion.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept proposed plan as presented.
With that-
With the condition.
We're sorry, you just said that with the condition. Just said that, with the condition with the O&M.
To be updated as per DPW request.
I'll second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Bingo.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Just lost my computer. All right, so we're on to liaison updates. We have many liaison updates other than the CONCOM, which we kind of already got?
Yeah, we already covered that and each of the projects.
Yeah.
Yep.
I haven't been to historical. Anything from NEMCOG, Paul?
Me, I haven't been.
Oh, you're in NEMCOG, sorry. And anything from Housing Advisory? Nothing?
Nothing, just Community Preservation will be meeting January 17th. That's all we have.
Annual goals and objectives.
Well-
Work plan.
I'd like to, I'd like to have us look at the RC district so we can avoid some situations like what we have with Hildreth.
Well, like we, I'm sorry.
We have with Hildreth, because right now, if we're incentivizing, like the tearing down of single-family and building of duplexes because the requirement is half of what it is for a single-family. Like us to maybe look at that zoning and maybe put that as a goal to look at that. And then in, in parallel with that, then we can look at the FAR percentages to allow what we want to happen, right? People adding those, you know, additions. But, you know, part of the problem, at least for me, was that I didn't want it to incentivize more of the RC. So like maybe, like that would be something I'd like to kind of address with this, for the town.
I have, we have, I don't know for how many years, how, how long have I been on this board? I can't remember anymore.
Just a long time.
And every year, we talk about the fact that what we have on the ground is may, matches our zoning by maybe 20%. Really, most of the stuff in town, most of the, certainly the residential- Just, is just non-conforming. Okay, we can go on, you know, and live in a world where everything is non-conforming, but at some point, some review of what our zoning requirements are might be in order if for no other reason than to get things a little bit closer. We're never, you know, they're always gonna be non-conforming.
Well, and we did talk about doing something along the lines of a village-
Yeah, we did.
-zoning.
And that's one, one particularly important piece and I'm, I'm hoping maybe the Center Village people will talk about this a little bit too.
I think the Center Village people are-
I think they may be.
In, probably in the process of putting something together. Is there a plan that's in any way put forth for North, Center?
For a village?
Yeah.
No, they haven't talked about the, right now, the biggest, the plan they're looking at now, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't talked zoning for a village, is that they're redesigning-
The transportation project.
They're, they're going down the road of redesigning Vinal Square.
Yeah.
Transportation-wise, roadway-wise. And then I think that will then lead to potential zoning changes.
No more cars driving through the front window of Rosie's?
Yeah, that, that adds a little bit, too.
But that's gonna be, that's, that's underway, I mean that-
So I guess, I mean, from a higher level, we've just approved at town meeting in the fall, a strategic plan to be put out to bid for someone to come to kind of align everything. But so it seems like, you know, we have North kind of doing their own thing over there and Center Village putting together their own plan and they all have impact on kind of the long-term master plan, which is under us, and zoning.
Yeah.
I don't know what is the best way to kind of knit these pieces together, but it seems like we should be knitting these pieces together in a more-
Well, actually, that was discussed tonight at 5:00 with the Strategic Plan Committee.
Okay, well, can you update us on that?
Uh, yeah, we're, we are hoping, we're hoping to, yeah, to get the RFP, we'll be working seriously on generating an RFP for the consultant at our next meeting. We discussed that tonight. And, you know, one of the complexities, and it's not a complexity that's Chelmsford's alone, is we've got all kinds of plans all over the place. We have our master plan, we have a Center Village plan, we have a-
North plan.
An aging plan.
129, what about 129 plan?
They're all over the place and one of the tasks likely to be part of this may be a, a review of all of them to find out where they don't match. There are, I'm sure, some situations in which there is some discrepancy between the various plans. Anyway, that's ongoing. I'll probably know a whole lot more in another couple of weeks.
So along those lines, 129 plan, was that generated by the Economic Development Committee?
I mean, it was initiated by Economic Development Committee.
And where is that? Is that written somewhere that I can look at?
Yeah, I can forward it out if it's not on the website. It's, that plan is-
That plan is now essentially implemented by Lisa Maroni, the Business Development Director. I would say the vision and the zoning, you know, town meeting took that as, the planning board and town meeting took that as far as they wanted to. And I think, you know, my major interpretation of the strategic plan is not necessarily what to do with Center Village or North Village.
Right, yeah.
It's what is the town's strategy as it pertains to big business, beating 129, and then small business. So the, as we've discussed...
I think the strategic plan is just about business?
I think it's about what's, what is, what's the town's economic development strategy? What's the town's housing strategy?
Right.
In some, in some places, they intersect, and in some places, they don't.
Well, then, then...
And I think, I think all of that are issues that the planning board has previously identified and in some cases, discussed. But nothing's really been resolved.
Right.
And what I've heard, and I think we see this when the planning board reviews projects and neighborhoods come out, is that we've done a lot of zoning that isn't necessarily what the neighborhoods or the current planning board desires. But yet, the zoning is still in place.
Right.
And I think, I think that's part of the goal for the strategic, for the strategic plan, because it's sending, it's sending conflicting messages, not only internally to stakeholders, but more concerning is external stakeholders.
Right.
But I think, I think the Strategic Plan Committee needs to work with the other stakeholders, including the planning board, to figure out what are, what is, what are we trying to cover here in a strategic manner? And I don't, I don't think it's granular. I think it's very high level.
I think that's correct.
I got a question about the 129. Any, there's no generated interest seeing the success of Prest Cafe down there is jammed.
We have not heard anything.
There's no other businesses that wanna come in and try to get some more of that? Especially if we have two more drive-throughs?
We have not heard anything. I'm surprised as well. We have not heard from property owners, nor have we heard from restaurateurs.
Wow, I'm surprised. I've been down there the past month or so twice, and it has been jammed.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, Prest, I mean, the town's very fortunate in the sense that you're not gonna find a better restaurant than Prest. And so any other restaurateur that's looking for a, to be the second successful enterprise, Prest is a really good starting point. On the other hand, it's also a, it's a beast within the industry. Very few restaurants are gonna be able to compete with them, you know, for that daytime employment center, 129. So it'd have to be an entirely different concept.
Daytime, but even on the weekends, it's packed.
Yeah.
No, I mean, like...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, exactly.
Five in the morning till 10 at night.
So, so, so that the original strategy is still in place. I mean, the goal and the hope and desire was that, you know, you'd get a successful restaurant down there. And that'd be a proof point.
Yep.
But to answer your question directly, I'm not aware of any serious inquiries.
I wouldn't be surprised, though. I mean, it's...
So 129 would be, it's a good restaurant.
It is.
Like the Lynn Marketplace.
I work in Boston.
They did a great job. Yeah, has all different, but they have a couple of good restaurants, like... I'm hoping that more restaurants come there.
You know, I think, I think a lot of these questions about why, related to implementation, I personally hope and look forward to having those discussions as part of the strategic plan. Because I think, I think a lot of people, above and beyond the fact that people don't necessarily like what the zoning envisions, I think a lot of people also don't necessarily understand the market realities that exist and the constraints that the town finds itself in from an infrastructure perspective, never mind political will or zoning matters. So I think there's, I think the town has reached the point, I think that's why the strategic plan is critically important, is, you know, people mention Linfield Light or, you know, Third Avenue Light.
Right.
Well, the zoning doesn't say that. And I think the external market has received pretty clear messages that that's not gonna be permitted. And even if it could be permitted, you have a wastewater situation.
That market is changing right now. There's a lot more vacancies in the lab industry right now. They build too much, too...
Right. So it's a variety of contexts. I mean, I think in the, at this table, the board has discussed the notion of it's better to keep an office building vacant than to change it from a tax perspective. And then, and then, you know, certain industries have proposed things, and it hasn't necessarily been well-received. So the town has reached the point where I think, you know, it needs to seriously figure out how does it view 129? What is the compelling public interest if that 6 million square feet serves? What is the town's expectations for it?
Whatever happened to analog? Remember we approved at town meeting that tax break?
Yep, those projects are moving forward.
Those projects move, so that's going...
Well, I thought they were pulling out of Chelmsford.
No, no, we just proved, we gave them a tax break because of the chips.
Yeah, for the chips, yep.
Yeah, 'cause that's, because the government now doesn't want it all being built overseas and pushing...
I'm getting work out of that.
Yeah, so there's a big push now. So analog, is analog, have they built it out?
They're in the process.
So that changed there, that changed there. Oh, that's great. I do work for the guy that started that business, DC Path. I take care of his house in Westwood.
I do think we gotta go back to the village that we, on that whole petition that was done. We talked about going back to look at that on 110.
Well, I know the Center Village Committee's looking at doing something. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know if they wanna take that and run with it.
I haven't heard that.
I'd say give it a little time. I know...
I haven't heard them talk about that at all. Maybe they plan on talking about it.
Do you have inside information?
I mean, that'd be a good committee to maybe start, have a first crack at it.
Right.
Before we go too deep into some of the zoning changes, it would be good to maybe take some action on the zoning conflicts that we...
That we already identified.
Identified. So maybe we can start looking at some of those.
It's a pretty big job.
Yeah.
And...
Well, it was, I think it took the wind out of our sails that the first one that we identified was Monmouth and McFarland, and then they clearly didn't wanna change their zoning.
Well, they may have changed their minds right now.
No, no, no. Go ahead.
They didn't want those streets changed. The proposal that came from NemCog was not what we went to them with. The proposal from NemCog is that we change those streets and Riverneck. We went to them with just those streets, not Riverneck. And so the result is two very different things.
But the intent was to try to protect them a little bit.
Yeah, and...
And they wanted to sell, if they could sell, which they had the right to do that.
No, because they didn't know how the planning board was gonna vote on, on the development.
I'm just nervous about the warehouse under 20,000 square feet can be built down there right now.
If we, if we look at Riverneck Road, looking at fixing that zoning conflict with Riverneck Road and those streets together, the feedback that I've received from residents in that area is that they would be very supportive of that.
Well, we should revisit that.
Yeah, we should.
Even though they are grandfathered and they understand that, that's a risk that they would take agreeing with us. I think it's worth revising that again.
Anyone who's on Riverneck and is currently not residential would be grandfathered. That's what you're saying, right?
Yep.
Well, that's one project, definitely, because he's sub...
Well, all of them.
All of them.
Like if you're...
There's a couple of homes that have...
But the percent, but NemCog identified that as a very low percent of the land on Riverneck in that area.
So where on Riverneck would we go, from 129 to...
I believe the proposal from NemCog, I'd have to go back, is the entire stretch.
So the IA district is like right, so you know where Monmouth is, right?
Monmouth, yeah.
Yeah, so it's like slightly, like a street over, like right there, it turns into, from 129 to there is residential. Then it goes IA for Peace, under Route 3, all the way up to, just right before St. Joseph's Cemetery. And then it goes back to residential. So there's this section.
Like at Tony's?
Huh?
Like at Tony's?
Before Tony's, before, it's right by St. Joseph's, like right before you hit. I can probably give you the numbers on it.
The Pigeon Club, where the Pigeon Club is?
Yes, exactly. Right there.
Like the whole thing of cemetery.
The Pigeon Club, the Pigeon. You don't know the Pigeon Club?
I know where it is. I didn't know what it was.
Sounds like a road trip.
So anyway, so there's a section that's IA. So that's, you wanna take that section and those streets and put it back to residential.
So turn the entire Riverneck into residential.
But then there's still grandfathering.
Yes.
Yeah, there's businesses there, but nobody else would be able to become a 20,000-foot warehouse.
Right, right. And there's, you know, yeah.
Yep, basically.
And that was essentially the NemCog recommendation.
Well, I mean, zoning is the fall, so we can start working on it.
Start talking.
Once we get through the MBTA hurdle, hopefully.
You'll have lots of time.
Yeah.
Lots of time.
Famous last word.
Why? Because you think nothing else is coming down the pike?
No, I just, MBTA's taken up a lot of your time. Non-regulatorily, you've been on MBTA zoning.
Pretty much.
Yep.
Get boring.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it if you do.
On favor?
Aye.